All right, we're now reconvened. Thanks for everyone's break moment. We're now moving into public hearing number five. And since Diane Ken is already ready, I'm just gonna let her introduce it.
All right, good evening. So this is an annexation for property on, at 3705 Green Level West Road. 3.67 acres. This will show you that it's at the very northernmost part of our jurisdiction. Property is, let's see if we have a better map, is located on Green Level West, near Green Level Church. It was part of an overall rezoning that was called Green Level Market. This site actually is a proposed future Goddard School. And so they are requesting annexation into the town's corporate limits in order to get town services. Staff does recommend approval.
All right, questions for Diane?
There's no issues related to the boardwalk behind the property as far as any kind of, there's no interaction between that kind of structure and annexation, right?
There's not any connection between that, but there are connections to the White Oak Greenway through Green Level Market, which is these several properties.
I think it's built now, right?
White Oak Creek Greenway is built, but as these are building, there are connections between the different Green Level Market uses and the Greenway.
That's part of the rezoning?
I think it's part of the subject, or the site plans.
So there's definitely one for Freedom Square, which is the park over here.
And then there's connectivity between all three.
There's connectivity between, there's, thus far, we've only done one review of the middle pieces here.
Okay.
And thus far, nothing's proposed there. Goddard School, I do not recall if there's a.
But there's connectivity throughout, it's all one retail and office complex. They have interconnectivity between them, and there's a connection to the White Oak Creek Greenway from there.
I'll likely see the other ones at some point in the future, the other parcels.
Only for annexation.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, questions for Diane? All right, is there applicant? Nope, okay. Or we, or, no applicant, right? Okay, just checking. All right, so at that, I'll open the public hearing for public hearing number five. And Jeff Roach, if needed, he must have answered that question himself by not sticking around. All right. Absent. All right, we'll close the public hearing now and refer the matter back to council.
I'll make a motion when we approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor of approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. We now have Old Business Number One. And this was a continuation from October 16th. This is the 540 Flex and Business Park.
Yes, sir. Just again, that's roughly where it is. Olive Chapel and 540. The applicant's requesting rezoning from Tech Flex to Tech Flex in order to make a couple of changes. I went over a good portion of this the last time around, so I'm gonna be brief. There are three uses that are being added. Automotive accessory sales and installation, commissary, manufacturing and processing minor. Since the October 16th meeting, the applicant has added some use, some conditions onto here. Those are all listed on page two. At the October 16th public hearing, the applicant agreed to add condition number six, which reads, "Evergreen screening with a six-foot minimum height at time of planting will be provided from Olive Chapel Road." Let me get down to a better image. Here we go. From Olive Chapel Road to the eastern, along the eastern property line behind Building D. That is that easternmost building there. Since then, the applicant has also proposed two additional conditions, and these are to try to meet the concerns of the property owners within the condo buildings, the, as well as Mr. Jensen's concerns. The project shall provide rooftop solar systems that produce a minimum of 14 kilowatts of electricity. The system shall be installed and completed prior to signature at the final site plan plat for the last phase of the development. And then the uses commissary and manufacturing processing minor shall only be located in buildings accessed behind the security gate.
On that one, it was, I think they committed to a solar, one solar PV system. But that's, if they sent that information in, then that's, as I said, I just think it might be a little bit confusing.
I'm sorry, I don't see the.
The 14 kilowatts is the key part there, right?
Yeah, the 14 kilowatts is the key part. And it could, I guess it could be on more than one system total. So I'll let it go.
Okay.
Just know, but I just know what they're gonna be doing.
It's probably going to be on one building.
It will be on one building, yeah.
I think they gave, they gave us this language and the possibility that they wanted to split it up.
It could be something else.
There's also been one other change. Staff recommended this to the applicant, and they agreed. Condition one, under the proposed conditions, is that the, now, the new language reads, "The buildings adjacent to Olive Chapel Road shall be designed to look like office buildings. They shall be constructed of entirely masonry products on each facade and include storefront windows." From the 2013 and 2014 rezoning cases, it read that there would be, that they would be two-story height, and the architecture would include windows and dormers for residential appearance. Staff made this recommendation because if you've ever driven along there, there's kind of a faux-mansured roof style with peaked dormers along the fronts, and then as you get back into the office buildings back there, it turns into more of a standard, kind of a flatter roof, not roofline, but front, more of a standard office look. And just in case the applicant, or say, a future property owner, wanted to redesign some of that, we wanted to give them that added flexibility. We feel like the windows and dormers option, requirement originally kind of set the stage for something that wasn't exactly what we would have preferred there at the time, but we didn't anticipate that that's what it was going to be.
This could mean?
So, this does not require, no, not new buildings, new facades. Basically, all they'd have to do is take that fake, that roof off, which it's a faux roof anyway, and then extend it to the top to give it a parapet wall look that would be consistent with the rest of it. It's important to note, though, that the new language does not render the existing building out of compliance. It just get, adds flexibility for in case someone wants to renovate in the future, they wouldn't have to provide those two particular details, the dormers and the residential With that said, staff recommends approval as shown, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Patrick with Jones and Kinnaman is also here to answer any questions that you have.
All right, questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but can, can you include all eight conditions that were included in the staff report? Because they were not in the actual application, and we want to make sure that those are included.
Yep, we'll, with, all right, friendly amendment to add all eight conditions to your motion. You accept? All right. So we have the motion to approve with the eight conditions. Discussion on the motion?
The one thing I, I just want to say to maybe you guys or anybody, I guess, is that, yeah, I first had kind of a, didn't like the idea of like the medical facilities being right next to the automotive use in particular, kind of didn't seem to fit. But I kind of learned more about that use, and it's not dirty and loud, it's more just kind of light and light stuff. And I think that after learning more about it, maybe I was a little bit too harsh on them the first time, and that's probably the reason why I'm.
Yeah, for what, for what it's worth, I agree. Applying tint to glass is a pretty simple process, and it's not noxious in any way. The other thing to keep in mind is this is Tech Flex, right? This is, this is, the dentist's is more out of alignment, if that's not quite a tooth joke. It's an orthodontic joke, maybe. But, but if they like being there, that's fine. There's an insurance salesman that's in there, and he doesn't mind whatever use is going on around there. Tech Flex is set up to be sort of this bridge-gap sort of weird combination of stuff, and so you have to be a little bit flexible to say who's your neighbor, as long as they're not, you know, truly obnoxious. You know, it's a use that we can all kind of get along. And so I think that's good. And, you know, dentists typically will go into office in institution, and there's one literally, I won't say stone's throw, because that's dangerous, but a pine cone's throwaway. But I, I think this is a good change, and I like the idea of adding the commissary as well. I wanted to say that last time, but I kind of let it ride. But, you know, commissaries equal food trucks, and food trucks. There's, come on, food trucks. I mean.
That use I liked, actually, that was the automotive one that was.
So, and frankly, I'd love our food trucks to have a commissary, because they actually do a better job of providing good, clean, healthy, sanitary food options when they have a commissary that they can use, instead of trying to figure out how to do it all in their truck. So that's all good. With, with that, I'll stop. See if anybody else has anything.
The closest commissary is in Fuquay Barina right now, isn't it? I think that's, so this is, this is really an asset for the area.
I think so.
Was there?
All right, if there's nothing else, is there a vote ready to be had? All right, let's vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. And that takes us now to New Business Number One. This is the Oak Point Phase Two Revised Master Subdivision Plan on Jenks Road. And Shelley?
I actually think your alignment joke might have worked for automotive and dental.
Okay. I can cue it up again.
You got to double pun them on there.
Bring it on.
Good point.
All right, so this is the Oak Point Phase Two subdivision plan revision, as you said. Just in case you're not familiar, Oak Point is up here. It's located kind of between 55 and Old Jenks Road. We are only looking at the Phase Two portion of Oak Point. We're not looking at the first phase. Phase Two was the only one that had to come back. It is multi, it is medium-density conditional zoning, it does meet the land use map. The portion that we're looking at actually measures 28.48 acres and has about 56 units on it, located on this property. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on August 29th, and that's, meeting report is in your staff report. Oak Point received subdivision plan approval on July 21st, 2015. Overall, the subdivision has 96 single-family lots on about 57.35 acres, and the overall density is just about 1.68 units per acre. During construction, it was discovered that the lots in the Phase Two along Beaver Creek, so only these lots on the east side of Beaver Creek, are too steep to accommodate single-family homes without the addition of retaining walls across several lots. This change required a revision to the grading plan for these lots. Staff did not feel that that was within our power to provide as an administrative adjustment. Just for your information, the zoning conditions that were approved for this property are located on page two of your staff report. None of those are proposed to change in any way. The applicant is proposing some changes to the grading, specifically in a couple of places. So, let me get back here. I know that this is difficult to see. I will do my best to enlarge this a smidge. So, the applicant is proposing some change into the grading here. Basically, it's at the rear of the lots. There is some amount of change as we get closer to the road as well, just in order to support that. Here as well, and then in this area. There's a retaining wall that stretches across two lots here, and then a stacked retaining wall that stretches along these lots down here. It's four, five lots. No changes are being proposed to the type and size of the approved perimeter landscape buffers. In some areas, the supplemental plannings have actually been increased or changed to better meet the buffer requirements. There's no proposed changes to public utilities. Storm drainage is still going to meet the Town of Apex standards. There is a small change to the resource conservation area, and that's essentially because these areas that I pointed out are within the outer 50 feet of the stream bed of the 100-foot stream buffer. That section, when it's undisturbed, is allowed to count towards RCA. It's also allowed to be disturbed and then revegetated under state law and under our UDO. However, because it's being disturbed in order to smooth out this topography, it's no longer allowed to count towards RCA. That being said, the applicant was required to provide 12.59 acres. They originally were providing 19.4. Now they're providing 17. So they're still well in excess of what they were required to provide initially. 22% versus 27%, I'm sorry, 29.7%. So we still have plenty of RCA out here. As I said, during construction, it became apparent that we needed some retaining walls and some additional grading, especially within the outer 50 feet of that 100-foot perennial stream buffer. The biggest issue, though, some of this grading, staff could have approved administratively. What we cannot approve is the addition of the easements that are required for retaining walls that run across the back of multiple lots. The applicant had the option, under the last approval, to do multiple individual retaining walls, which would require multiple tieback areas and kind of C-shaped walls with a space in between each one of them. Staff discussed this with the applicant at the time and looked at a bunch, a bunch of options with them, and it was decided that jointly that that wasn't going to look good, and it really wasn't going to function as well as having retaining walls, one large wall across multiple lots. It would be a serious encumbrance on the lots, and would also just have a better chance of failing over time and not getting the result that we wanted.
So can I ask a quick clarification on that?
Yeah.
Is it, so even though the other would have been administratively approvable, it's, this is coming because this is a deviation from that? It's not that you don't support it necessarily, but it's no longer administrative because this is a deviation?
It's no longer staff-level.
Staff-level, right. So it requires a little bit of.
Exactly.
Council approval.
Staff did not feel it was in our power to, on our level, administratively approve additional easements that y'all had never seen.
But you can render an opinion.
We can.
To us, okay. Very good.
And actually, we do recommend approval of this. The retaining walls meet all of the UDO requirements. The plans meet all of our requirements and everything. There are no riparian walls within, or, I'm sorry, no retaining walls within the riparian buffer. Never heard of a riparian wall, so.
How tall are the retaining walls, out of curiosity?
The UDO mandates that retaining walls on single-family lots may be no more than six feet tall unless they are tiered, and that there has to be a three-foot tier between each section, and it still can be no more than 12. So if I recall correctly, in this area, the walls run between two and four feet. Down here, they start at like one and a half feet, and then where we have some tiers, they get up to about nine to 10 feet. So.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them, but staff does recommend approval. The applicant and engineer are also here to answer any questions.
Shelley, when, when is Thorn Hollow Drive being opened into this?
They have not yet platted even their first phase yet, so that's a ways off.
Can I, do you, can you give either a relative answer or a, I'm sure you probably can't give an absolute answer, meaning on the calendar, but is there a relative answer, like after something happens?
So the second phase would have to be platted. The applicant has done some infrastructure work and grading through here. I would be surprised if it happened within the next three months. It's possible, but from my experience, unlikely. However, Ryan just moved up, so I think he might have a better answer for you.
All right. Let's hear from Mr. Akers if you have, or some information to provide.
Eric, counselor, counselors. Ryan Akers, 805 Wasdell. I'm the engineer that inherited this project with McAdams. I think the, the point of your question is because there's a water line that has gained a lot of notoriety recently. That water line, I think, is going to be pressurized and tested this week. I believe it's going to be backfed in the next few weeks. There's a secondary connection, and so there should be a good gridded water line for the Thorn Hollow Castlewood residence.
I was actually referring to just the through traffic.
Ah, I thought you were the water line. Okay. That probably is gonna be, end of the first quarter next year. Infrastructure's mostly done, but we're focused on Phase One.
And that you're, to your water point, Castlewood is on town water, right?
Parts of it are that had failed wells.
Yeah. Okay.
Is it most of it?
There's.
Most of it.
But they're not a town.
We have an old, we have an old agreement with them because they're, we have a very old agreement with them.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Shelley, what'd you say?
No, you're fine. We have a very old agreement with them because there, most of the wells out in that area did fail. I think it dates back to the 90s, that they were provided town water through an unusual situation without having to be annexed into the town.
Okay, questions? Comments? Wouldn't really do it that way anymore. And when I say don't really, I mean we don't. Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to New Business Number Two. And Amanda Bunce is gonna talk about Jordan Oaks Master Subdivision Plan.
So Jordan Oaks is located in the southwest portion of the jurisdiction in the New Hill area between Jordan Point Subdivision and Jordan Manners. The property was zoned to PUCSEZ recently. It's about 31 and a half acres, and 50 dwelling units are proposed. It's in the low-density residential lane use classification on the 2030 lane use map. So this image is oriented with north to the left. So this is Jordan Point and the Horton Ridge Boulevard stub. Horton Ridge Boulevard is a major collector street, and so the subdivision will include the construction of the major collector. And then as we spoke about, as you spoke about earlier, coordination with Jordan Vista's, which is located here, to finish this connection through Jordan Manners. The subdivision has an overall maximum density of 1.6 units an acre, which is less than what, when RCA would normally be required. However, mass grading is proposed. Therefore, the applicant has provided 1.54 acres or 4.85% of RCA. The buffers, as required by the putt, are being provided, which are a 10-foot Type B buffer adjacent to vacant property and lots that are 6,000 to 12,000 square feet, a 20-foot buffer adjacent to developed property with lots greater than 12,000 square feet, and then there's a 10-foot Type A buffer along the major collector. I will point out that the lots on this side of the major collector are accessed by a shared driveway with access points located here and here. So it almost acts like of an alley in the front, so to say, because each lot is not allowed to have individual driveway access onto a major collector. Public utilities are gonna be extended. Town services will be provided. The Parks and Rec Committee addressed this during the putt approval. The proposed master subdivision is consistent with the Apex Transportation Plan in that the subdivision is extending the major collector street from Jordan Point to the eastern property line. In addition, a 10-foot wide multi-use path is being provided along the north and west side of, on this side of Horton Ridge Boulevard. And then sidewalks, we've provided on both sides of all other streets. Planning staff recommends approval of the master subdivision plan, and the planning board heard this last week and unanimously recommended approval. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question. How wide is a major collector street?
Major collector street has a right-of-way of 60 feet.
Okay. That's not the original construction of the street, or is that what it is? Curb-to-curb 60 feet?
Well, that's the right-of-way.
That's the right-of-way width. Curb-to-curb, I believe, is a 31 foot back-to-back or 35? I'm not, I'm not certain. Yeah. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but it's more, it's wider than a residential street.
Okay, so the shared driveway, this is a unique situation. I don't think I've seen this before for those lots on the south side.
Sure.
Is that gonna be, is that like a, like a minor collector as far as width? Was, is it gonna allow two-way traffic? How, what's the?
So it's essentially like a.
It's a friendage road.
It's almost like, just to zoom in a bit, it's kind of herced on this sheet. I apologize, I don't know the width of that driveway off the top of my head, but it is shared. We have another example of a shared driveway in the front for single-family lots just south of Chapel Ridge. There's about seven lots across the street from Chapel Ridge, right on Olive Chapel, that share a driveway in the front. So this operates similar to that.
Okay. And the, the staff, you guys aren't worried about that intersection on the southern part, kind of somebody turning right out of the, out of the neighborhood road, and then the people, someone turning left out of the alley road? Is that?
This has been reviewed by our traffic engineer, and he did not have concerns, given the few, the small number of homes here and the low number of homes on, you know, the traffic. He didn't feel that there was a concern.
And they'll, I guess they'll be able to have visibility enough to see the person turning right when they're trying to turn left, right? I mean, it seems like it's kind of close, is my.
It is, I mean, it is close to here, but we had to ensure that all lots were receiving access without allowing all lots. So this is the few, as few as possible, essentially.
So bigger, a more traveled road would not, you wouldn't kind of, probably wouldn't encourage that kind of intersection, but because it's small or low number of cars, I guess?
There's a small number of lots that access the shared driveway. And so the frequency of there being conflicts or potential conflicts would be very low.
Yeah.
Is, can I tag on this? Is this very similar to that little stretch on Olive Chapel Road?
Yes, right across the street from Chapel Ridge.
Yeah.
Yes.
I knew I'd seen that somewhere before.
Is that a joke?
I'm sorry.
We're still talking about, go on, go ahead.
And they wouldn't, you guys wouldn't want just one side road entrance, right? It needs to have two, the alley road?
Right, and so this, and this would allow people on this end, it essentially gives two ways in and out, so it distributes the traffic better. So there'd be less people using either one, you know, at any one time, instead of everyone having to use the one access point. There's two.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. And to my recollection, we have a New Business Number Three that was added to the agenda, so let's make sure we can, was there a piece of paper for this, Mr. Town Manager? Yeah, that's the one that's highlighted to add on. Right, there we go. Okay, so Drew, you have the floor.
Last meeting, you all approved students from Apex Friendship High putting, or synchronizing music to the lights on the tree in front of the depot. They discovered that there was an aesthetic technical issue, wasn't gonna work on the tree, so they went ahead and put lights on the depot building, on the downspouts, on shrubs next to the depot on both sides, and put up four spiral lit trees without approval. So now they're asking for approval for that, and that too will be, or that will be synced to the music. The tree will not, the tree, so the tree will be in its normal steady state of lit or not, depending on the time of day. And this, the music and lights would, would play in the evening hours. So they're, they're asking for approval, not really permission. They, they went ahead and did it, so now they, it's not something I felt that I could say, yeah, that's close enough to what the council said, go ahead. It's really a departure from what you all said. Bringing it back to you.
Well, thanks for bringing it back to us. You know, if I could make, make comment, we went into this, we went into this thinking, it's a little out there, but we're willing to try something new, 'cause.
We went into this, we went into this thinking, "It's a little out there, but we're willing to try something new, 'cause why not, right? We're not stuck in our old ways. And we like tech and we like supporting the school, and let's let them try something." So we approved the tree and we specifically kept it to the tree. And, you know, I'm a little disappointed that it got applied to something beyond that without even coming to the town manager first and going, "It's not working on the tree lights. Can we do something different?" Right? And then he would have had the opportunity to, at the very least, call us and talk to us and ask us, "What do you think?" And it would have put us in a position where we could say, "No, let's say fix it. If it doesn't work on the tree, then go back to your lab and figure out what's going on. Don't take the tree back to your lab." But, but now we're in an awkward position where it's been applied somewhere else, and I think that's good. But I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to take it away if it's installed and it works, but I kind of, part of me wants to see it. I mean, I know that sounds a little odd, but I don't know, at this point, I can't imagine what it looks like. I can imagine what it would look like on a tree, right? It's, the, the, the space that's going to light or not light is contained, but now I don't know. And so I'm not trying to steer council one way or another. That's just how I feel. I, I'm, you know, I, I kind of feel like we got hoodwinked a little. Where, I don't know if it was on purpose or if it was, you know, just not really thinking about it and, "Oh, I figured we just could." I don't know. So I don't want to attribute motives that I don't know about. But frankly, I'm, if I have a, if I have, if I take a pessimistic view for a second, which I don't do often, but I try to for, to, to secure, if it looks, for lack of a better word, gaudy, then I want to know now before we go do it in front of everybody. And I can't picture it in my head, and that's concerning to me.
Have you seen it?
No. No, they were just finishing installation, uh, this afternoon. I walked down there, talked to them.
So shall we have somebody take a picture and bring it to us? Or do we need to look at it?
Or?
Five-minute recess, Drew, you run down there?
Well, it's not, they're not, not yet.
Well...
Alternative is nothing, right?
Yeah, and there's nothing wrong with nothing. It just means that we take another year to figure out what we want to do and let them do it again. I mean, I don't have a problem with nothing because we, we thought carefully and said, "Let's contain this experiment to the tree." It's the first time we doing it, so I think it's an experiment. Clearly it is because it didn't work. So that, it would, when something doesn't work, then it must have been an experiment, right? So it didn't work on the tree. Um, the first time you try it, it doesn't work, okay. Um, but I, I do want to know how everyone else feels, 'cause I don't, I, I don't want to be Scrooge on this, but I also don't want to have a bunch of people asking, "What were you thinking?" You know, I think it could be cool. It could be cool. I've seen synchronized light shows in yards, but I've also seen the kind that, like, you need to put on your sunglasses when you get anywhere near them. And I don't know what we got now.
Right.
So that, that's the, that's the part that I think I'm a little nervous about is I can't visualize it anymore.
So, so do you think the remedy is between now and the ceremony to have Drew or somebody take a video and send it to us all and we all weigh in, or, I mean, what's the best way to say yes or no up to that date?
Who, who, we have two people still, who's representing the group?
Nobody.
Nobody? So there's no one here representing the group?
Correct.
Just checking.
He was stretching.
I just, just check. So if, if no one's here representing the group, we can't ask a clarifying question? We can't ask for a demo, but we can ask it offline, but not, you know, it's, becomes asynchronous now. We have to, where's, that was a joke? Come on, synchronizing?
Oh.
It's getting late.
Can we defer this until we see the visualization?
They're talking about another meeting.
Before it, yeah, but maybe, can we do this via email?
That would be a violation of the meeting.
Can we ask staff to make that decision?
You can delegate.
Can we delegate? Does anybody on staff want?
Congratulations, Sean.
I'm getting Hughes. Hughes is getting in the bar. Our planning director put her hand up, but...
She actually...
You know Diane's hot on lights.
I have to be there Friday night because my son's playing in the band.
This is bef...
Like, this Friday?
Oh, next Friday.
Next Friday.
Okay. Yeah, no, that, we, we need to have...
We need to check out this week.
I need to see it like Monday. So I'd be willing, I'll call them and say, "I need to see it Monday." I might share my calendar with members of the council.
I see.
If you happen to show up there, um, not in a meeting mode, um, not together. And then I'm going to have to call you individually and say, "Hey, did you happen to go by there and see this?" One at a time?
Can we make a motion just to delegate the decision?
We can make the motion.
To delegate it to a committee?
We can ignore what, the last thirty seconds of what the town manager said.
Please.
But we can...
And you can delegate it to a committee and a committee of two?
Uh-huh.
Not more than two?
Okay.
Could accompany the manager if you have a recommendation?
All right.
A committee of council members?
Let's call this, how about Parks and Recreation? Oh, well, let's see. Uh, or an ad hoc committee, okay. Are there any, are, all right, so let's, I like this, I like this. So, um, I propose, if I can, from my seat, that we form an ad hoc committee with two council members and also delegate the town manager to go make the decision with, with a committee of two and only two, or two and not more than two.
But if there's two, there could be a split vote.
Well, the committee doesn't vote. It, we're delegating, we would delegate to the council mem, to the town manager.
For what's worth, I am ready to take the hit this year. If it's gaudy, then...
Are you?
So be it.
Okay, well, that's what, that's your point.
So, so it, I'm not sure if my, if we go, if we are, if we are okay with that, if I have two other, three others, I guess.
Well, if you have a majority that's ready to just say, "Go with it and forget it."
Not worry about this, but...
Is there, is there any, does anybody wants to go that route?
How many, how many square feet are we talking about on the bushes versus the tree? That's the other part of it. You know, the tree is, is really big.
By understanding, it's, it's right in front of the terr, it's on the terrace in front of it, correct?
So the, they're doing along the drip edge of the roof, so all, the whole front of the roof, down the downspouts on either side.
They've already done this.
Either side of the depot, uh, kind of, that come out from the sides for the, for the better word, there are shrubs. Those shrubs, including the face onto Center Street, so it's the shrub that separates Center Street from the depot courtyard, those will have lights on it. And then there are four trees that are four feet tall, spiral, white, plastic trees that light up and synchronize with the music.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's two on one side and two on the other.
So is there going to be a, a separate music? Are we talking about the band that's playing?
Separate music.
Separate.
It's synchronized like, like you see on YouTube.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Trans-Siberian Orchestra type of stuff. Yeah, yeah. But it's for charity, though, too, right? So we can kind of say, we, if it's bad, we can learn a lesson and...
Yeah, I, I would go with what you're saying, Brett, that, I, I would agree to that. However, if it's really gaudy, then you've got to get up there and...
Perhaps we can blame, uh, Councilman Dozier for the bad.
Well, that's right, she's not here.
All right. Well, let me ask this question. So Councilman Gant has already indicated he's ready to just go for it and take whatever happens.
Yeah.
Are there two other council members who feel the exact same way?
I might be, but let me ask some clarifying questions.
All right.
Friday night is our tree lighting ceremony, which I'm assuming, I think, does the ADVA put all this timeline together? Drew, is that, and then they have, or is JC emceeing it? And do you know anything about?
The town is not involved in that, other than the mayor goes there and says, "Light the tree" and they like...
Do better than that.
Well, yeah.
Well, I didn't make the last ADVA meeting, so I'm not sure what their timeline is looking like, who's emceeing it, what's going on. Because I remember last year, it was a bit scrambled and wasn't very clear and, um...
I would not ex, I would not expect anything different this year.
So when is the music going to play and the lights flash, is I guess what I'm after?
So after the lighting of the tree.
After the, the...
So after the mayor says, "Light the tree," we light the tree, everyone claps, and then they can...
And then they can have their light show?
Right.
And then they, the rest of the night, and again, I don't know if the carriages are coming in and out of there this year. I don't know.
Not, not there, no.
Okay.
That was on the consent, actually.
Right.
The carriage thing.
Correct.
There's a longer path, right?
Yes. What's those Jewish lights? Can they put this on to those Jewish lights that are...
On the menorah? That'll be set up, that Sunday is the menorah lighting, right?
Yeah, yes.
They could go...
Well, are there, are there two other people that want to just go for it besides Councilman Gant?
I'll go for it.
All right, well...
I'll, I'll go for it as well.
Really? All right.
Yeah, and I'll, you know, it's, it bothers me like it does you, Mayor. It, it, um, you, you point in this direction and they go this direction.
They're kids.
But they've got, but they've got an adult in charge of them who knew the rules. I don't even know the person, so I'm not throwing a specific person directly under the bus, knowing who it is. I just know that we gave straight guidance and it was pretty clear what the guidance was. And...
I think as a follow-up, maybe, maybe staff can, can in, inform the group that, hey, we, we're, you know, we went on a limb for you, you know, we just typically doesn't go this way, but we, we want you guys to do this and, you know, but, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I want to make sure that we do, if, if we go this route, it sounds like we about to have a motion, but if we go this route, I want to make sure that we have a conversation and wherever we have that, if it's the town manager or if it's the town manager or one of our town managers that has a conversation and says, "This does not set a precedent, and if this happens again, this will never happen again," kind of thing. Because, you know, a guy I work with says, "My grandma always said, 'You give a mouse a cookie, it comes back for a glass of milk.'" And I said, "Well, I don't know what that means," because I grew up in Louisiana, but you did. So you know what that one means, probably, I guess, right? I just realized.
It's the same thing. You give somebody an inch, they take a mile.
Right. And so I, I want to make sure that we don't create a scenario where somebody goes, "Nah, they'll be okay with it. Let's just go for it." Because one of these times, we're going to not be okay with it for real, like it'll be something that's meaningful. You know, this is just a bit of fun, some gaudy. Maybe it's pretty, maybe it's cool, maybe it's a good song, but I'm nervous. I'm nervous about downspouts. Um, bushes, maybe that'll be okay. That's, that can be cool. But when it's all over the building...
You want to put a time limit on it, then?
Can we limit it to a five-minute execution? I don't know.
Oh, gosh.
Or, or ten-minute, ten-minute exec?
You know, they're, they're trying to run a fundraiser, trying to drop it downtown, all that kind of stuff. Yeah. I mean, when I met with the folks, and this has all been kind of hurry-up, you know, because the, the idea came shortly before your last meeting.
This is another precedent I don't like.
And, you know, we said, "Okay, let's put our, dip our toe in the water. Let's do the tree, and then we can talk about more for following years."
Yeah.
And that's kind of where the, where my irritation is a little bit. We, we clearly say, "Well, let's talk about more in future years." Once we see how it all is executed. So I'm a little nervous about the way it's going to look.
All right.
Very attractive building down there.
So now I'll ask formally, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. And perhaps, well, obviously, we'll learn some lessons either way on this. And it's not, they have to come each year to do this again, right?
Correct.
It's not like this is a perpetuity thing.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I make a motion to approve.
Well, I guess I'm stuck because I opened my mouth early.
You don't have to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it, so long as Brett gets up there.
All right. Is there a motion to approve, um, the as-is installation, I guess would be a good way to put that.
Yep.
Any, any discussion on the motion?
We've had enough, haven't we?
All right.
I'm a little nervous myself, but...
I'll tell you, if you two vote no, then the mayor's going to have to make the decision. You've got to be alone.
So we rarely have that opportunity.
That's why I get paid the big bucks. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no.
No.
Wow. It happened. It's a two-two. Okay. And we're down one. All right, so, so I, I, I will, I will cast my vote with my, my statement. I'm all for fun and I love lights and I love music, but I also like rules and I don't like setting precedent. And I think if they had come to us and said, "We want to do this because the tree isn't working. Can we do it?" I'd be, "Fine, let's try it, but let's also define it." And we could have said, "Stay to the bushes. Don't go on the building." Because I think on the building makes me nervous that it's going to look like something we're not proud of. And I'm proud of the depot building. It's on our logo, it's on our website, and people start to know that's one of our icons. And with that said, I'm going to say no. But I also will say, if they want to say, "Can we just run it on the bushes?", I'll be okay with that.
Hold on, what about the, so now that lost, what about the committee thing we were talking about?
Well, we can go that route. So that's, that's, the next route is to say, we can make a motion to delegate the decision-making to the town manager, and we can also create an ad hoc committee that has one meeting opportunity, two members, so there's no majority. And the two members can meet with the town manager if they choose, it's optional, and provide feedback.
I'll make a motion to, to approve that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for delegation and ad hoc.
The Christmas lights ad hoc committee?
These are going to be the hard ones.
No.
So we, so is there discussion on the motion?
They're naming the committee tonight, I guess.
Clack, it's the clack. It's the Christmas light ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Who's going to be on it?
I think the two that said no probably...
Well, that's my role. That's my role. When we form a committee...
Oh, you name it.
When we form it, it's one of my, I only have three things I'm, I have to do by ordinance. And one of them is I name people to committees.
Okay.
So, um, if you, if you approve a committee of two, then I can either ask who wants to do it or I can just pick some people. But, um, but the motion is to delegate responsibility and approve a committee of two. That's the motion.
Okay.
So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously.
Made it.
All right. So with that said, is there anybody particularly feels strongly about meeting the town manager, meeting with the town manager to take a look at it sometime and give feedback?
I don't want to meet with them.
All right. All right, so I'll do that with you. Is that all right? All right, so...
Okay, we got the committee.
The council probably should be the ones to decide.
Council, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Killingsworth and myself will optionally meet with the town manager at our first annual clack meeting. Except it's not annual because it's ad hoc, so...
Single.
It's our first, our last meeting, personally. It'll be the last meeting of the clack. And we'll meet at the town hall. We'll let the town manager tell us when is a good, uh, uh, timing for him, uh, since he will be out of town for a few days, um, as will many of us. But we'll find a time early in the week so that we have time to give them reasonable feedback and time to respond.
Um, after Tuesday, by the way, after...
So Tuesday is a good day?
Tuesday is a good day.
The twenty-seventh, good.
Okay, we can make it work.
It's going to have to be after dark.
So we can actually see the lights?
No, no, let me...
That takes five, okay.
Let me ask one quick question with the committee. Can the committee make the decision that either yes or no, or...
Well, the town manager, we, we delegated to the town manager.
Or yes with just the bushes, like Brett's saying?
The town manager...
I'll, I'll work with the, I'll get the input from the committee and then we'll modify or the display or let it go as is, depending on what the committee has to say.
So to be clear, the committee is not going to vote on anything.
Right.
We're just going to observe and heal...